Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 9th. It is 6:00 PM. We have a quorum in council chambers. We have a full dais, including Councilmember Jackson, who's with us virtually. And I am calling this meeting to order. The first thing we're going to do is go into executive session. City council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 South State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. If you are with us in the public, I want to let you know that we will have our executive session, but we will come back and have our regular meeting starting at 6:30 regardless of how long the executive session takes. So it is 6:01, and we are in executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:22. We are out of executive session, and we will not be taking up Item Three as we have no actions as a result of executive session. So it is 6:23, and we are in recess until 6:30, when we will start our normal meeting. 6:23, and we are in recess. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, March 9th. At 6:30, I called the meeting to order for our executive session, so we are already called to order, but we are now in our regular session, which brings us to the top of Page Two. And the very first item we have is saying the pledge to both the U.S. and the Texas flag. If you will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the citizens of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the heart.
You would please remain standing. We are so happy tonight to have Dale Burke with us, and he will be giving us our invocation. We appreciate the work that you do as a police chaplain, and honestly, Mr. Burke, all the great things that you do in our community. Thank you so much.
It's an honor, for sure. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, you've just quickened on my heart tonight to especially address this council, the city council, the mayor, Schrader, and the city manager, and each council member. Lord, I thank you that you have called them to the positions that they're in. Lord, I thank you that you give them wisdom and a spirit of excellence tonight. And Lord, you have called them, as it says in Isaiah 62:6, "On your walls, O Jerusalem, I have set watchmen all the day and all the night, that they shall never be silent. You who put the Lord in remembrance take no rest." So Father, I thank you. They are an example of those who watch over this city, making plans, and, Lord, looking to what's coming forth. And, Lord, that you've gotten us through all the different things of fires and floods and COVID. Lord, I thank you that this is a blessed city, and you have many people in all the different positions within this city. And, Lord, I thank you, as people bring their situations to the council tonight, Lord, again, they'll have great wisdom in all they do in favor for those that are presenting their cases. We thank you for it all, and tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Burke. Great to see you. Really appreciate that. All right, council, we are moving on to presentations. The first one is the mayor's report. I don't have any extra stuff, so we can jump right into the first page, Colin. So I got to do some kind of cool things. On March 5th, which was just this past Saturday, there on the bottom, we were Team Charlie. We were the best team. I know the guys and gals would agree with me. I was with two Air Force National Guard and two Army National Guard, and we delivered 12 vaccines to elderly and medically homebound folks and went and visited their house. It turns out that sometimes having masked, uniformed men knocking on your door, it doesn't always bring real peaceful thoughts. And so I was calling ahead and saying, hey, it's Mayor Schrader. You've signed up for your vaccine, and we'd like to come help you out. Colin, if you go up to the front, the most amazing thing on the top left-hand corner is that I was able to take that picture and not faint, because I usually don't do good with needles, but that's a live-action shot. And then so many of us know Lucy Blakely, and she was, I want my picture taken with you. And she wanted to tell everybody that she was getting her vaccine and encouraged folks to get their vaccine. So it was kind of a long day, but it was a really wonderful day. There were, we went from Alpha Team to Hotel Team, and we had 20 vials, and some vials you can get 10 vaccines, some vials you can get 11 vaccines. So they did, they hit like 117 was the vaccines that we did on Saturday. And then next to that, on March 2nd, the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, we passed out food boxes, and I know we're masked, but that's Paula Pate, myself, Terry Moore, and Sheila Lowe, and we took a quick moment to take a picture. We were all passing out food that day, which was a lot of fun. Then below that, you'll see that the chamber had their Alive After Five, and they have another one coming up this week, but this took place since our last council meeting. And Dream Finders is one of the home builders in Pecan Park, and they have really just jumped into the community and been extremely supportive and building some great houses, and it was nice to be at the Alive After Five. And then, y'all, I'm sorry, I'm saving the best for last. Move over to the right-hand side, Colin. One of the cool things I got to do was judge the Lego contest for the BISD ACES kids, the after-school kids. And she not only let me judge the Legos, but I got to pick the category, and the category this time was bridges. So the picture that he's showing right there, that was Valerie's Bridge, and you can see there was room for the cars in between. Then if you go up one in the middle, that's Vicente's Bridge, and his bridge was extremely cool. He wanted it, the cars go in the middle, there's a platform on top that holds a crane, because the bridge had to be over a lake, that was the instructions that they were given, and his crane picks the boat up, lifts it over the bridge, and puts it down on the other side. So they all had the same number of Legos to work with, and that was Vicente's conclusion. And then above that is my friend Nicholas. And before people start writing me nasty letters, his mom gave permission for his picture to be shown tonight, and it was sent to me by their counselor, April. And Vicente's Bridge, the part that he's holding, he read an article, this is amazing, read an article that people drive and litter comes out, and they don't know it. So the thing he's holding in his other hand is moves with the flow of the river and collects litter so that you can get the litter out of the river. So if you can't judge a Lego contest, I mean, that was the highlight of my week. And we do it Zoom, so all of these youngsters are at home. They all have the same Lego sets. They all get the same directions, and then they get to make their presentation and show their designs, and they are just a ton of fun, just really fun, fun thing to do. The next slide is my planned events, which was hardly anything because I turned in my progress so late, so we'll just skip on over to the upcoming events. And you'll see that I've got some meetings this week. I know several of us are participating in TML's Elected Officials Conference. And then, council, we will be back in two weeks on March 23rd at our last council meeting for March. And that is my mayor's report. Councilmember Ennis, what would you like to report this evening?
I don't have anything to report, but I can only imagine that that Lego effort warmed your engineer's heart, did it not?
It really did. It really did. It was a very fun thing to do. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, after seeing the report on Legos, I'd really be ashamed to report anything.
Councilmember Rogers?
I don't have anything. We have Main Street meeting tomorrow, so I'll have a report next time.
Great. Main Street tomorrow. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. The only thing that I have is just a comment. This morning, I whined a little bit when I wrote the check for my utility bill, and my wife looked at me and said, shut up, you stayed warm, didn't you?
I wouldn't touch those words of wisdom for anything. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I just wanted to wish all of the women and all the ladies a Happy National Women's History Month. We're really proud of all the women, not only on the council and the staff, but in our whole city and in our nation. So just Happy Women's History Month to all of you, and that's all that I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We're on Item 7C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago, I let mayor and council and the public know that we selected Fabiola DeCarvallo to be our Director of Hearing and Capital Project Management. And this evening, not only do you get to hear about her, you get to see her. Fabiola, please stand up and wave. So, thank you.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, council. Fabiola's first day was yesterday, and on the screen is a brief summary of the major topics that she will be working on. And yes, she has hit the ground running. Trey has made sure of that. She's been participating in a whole bunch of meetings already and getting geared up and will help us prepare for the May 14th meeting, council, where we'll go over a newly revised and updated five-year capital plan. Fabiola comes to Bastrop with some really on-point and significant and relevant experience. She has spent several years with the very well-run, I will say, city of Shurdenland, where she literally wrote the book on project management procedures there and managed extensive capital projects, especially utility projects, which hits us right where we live. So we're really glad she's here. She comes to Bastrop with a wonderful family. I know that because she's told me that. Two young men in her household and a fine husband that we haven't met yet, but we look forward to. So really happy you're here, Fabiola. Last Friday, the city department directors and ACMs and I met in a full-day planning session. It's the first meeting like that we've held since I've been here. Very productive day. We spent a little bit of time debriefing on the ice storm, and I won't go into a whole lot of details here, but again, we think the city staff team responded to that event really, really well, made good decisions, made timely decisions, and served the public well. But as is necessary, the debriefing did identify a few things that we can improve on, and if I can try to summarize that, while I think we did everything we needed to do, some of those things weren't done by the people who should be doing those things. And so we've taken another look at how we're organized and who does what, and I think we'll benefit from that. So thank you to the team, and again, thank you to Chief Rosales for coordinating and leading that discussion. On the slide are other topics we've talked about, many of which will be the subject of that, again, that May 14th pre-budget planning session with the city council. We heard Jennifer Bills give us a well-presented update on where we are in implementing the comprehensive plan. That'll be good information for council to have as you're thinking about fiscal '22. We went over services and service levels for every department. Trey went over the five-year capital plan. Tracy Waldron gave us our first look at fiscal forecasts for our major operating funds, which is foundationally important information going into the budget. And we did our first look at potential new projects and potential increases to the budget or additions to the budget, not necessarily increases for fiscal '22, all of which, council, you'll hear more about again in May. And a quick word about your next council meeting. The weekly memo that went out Friday actually had a mistake in it. The weekly memo indicated that the River Loop Project Contract Award would be on the March 23rd agenda. It won't be, and that's not a schedule problem. That was just a mistake that should not have been listed in the weekly memo. So that's not on the agenda for the 23rd. But the other items on that list I think you know about, except perhaps for the Public Improvement Plan for Pecan Park, Section 1B, which may in fact be a consent item. And, council, that completes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. Council, do you have questions for the city manager? All right. We have no work session briefings tonight, so we'll be moving on to staff and board reports. I'm on Item 9A in the middle of Page Two. Receive the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Single Audit Report for the period ending September 30th, 2020, which includes the Independent Auditor's Report presented by the independent audit firm of Belt Harris Pachacik? Pachacik?
I have a question.
Submitted by Tracy Waldron. Council, you have two documents at the dais, so, all right, Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so I just am here to introduce Robert Belt. He is our partner that was in charge of our audit. This is the second year that Belt Harris has done our audit, and so he will be presenting a brief summary of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Welcome, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Tracy.
Or Mr. Belt, I'm sorry?
No worries.
Am I wrong?
Well, it's an honor to be here this evening, and I know it's been an extraordinary year for everyone. And while you think about what's happening on the front line, I want to talk about just a minute about what's happening in the back offices of the city, that you have a team here that's done extraordinary, great job during a very difficult circumstances, and it's very easy to let things slide on something like record-keeping and bookkeeping and things like that. But your team did an amazing job. And also, the last person you want to see show up in the middle of a disaster is the auditor, right? And it's just like, just something you don't want to see. But so I want to recognize Tracy Waldron and her whole entire team. I think they did a fantastic job during extraordinary circumstances this year. Over on Page 17 is our Independent Auditor's Report. Very pleased to announce it is a unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can provide to you as your auditors, that all the disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included, and the financial statements are materially correct. There is a tremendous amount of financial data within this report, and I don't want to put you to sleep, but I'm just going to point two different pages out on the entire document that kind of presents what happened for the year. Over on Pages 38 and 39 is a statement of revenues and changes in fund balance for your governmental funds. Your general fund is presented in the far-left-hand column. Revenues for the year came in at $12,475,000. Expenditures came in at $11,617,000. You had other financing sources and uses of $319,000, giving you a positive increase of fund balance for the year of $1,176,000. You began the year with a fund balance of $3,180,000, and you ended the year with a fund balance of $4,356,000. As you well know, in a governmental entity, the primary indicator of financial health is fund balance. That's the name of the game. And you're going to look at your fund balance in comparison to your operating budget to find out how many days of operating expenditures you have on hand, and I believe it was something like 130 days. And generally, the minimum is about 60 days, so the city is in great shape from a fund balance perspective, so very healthy in that regard. And all your other funds show very strong balances for the year. There was a reduction this year in the hotel motel tax fund. As you well know, your hotel occupancy was off its game this year, obviously, so that didn't come exactly as we anticipated, but other than that, everything else was looking good. The other thing I would point out, too, is the results of your enterprise fund operations over on Pages 46 and 47. Your water and wastewater fund is presented in the far-left-hand column. And looking at the very bottom of the page, going to the bottom line, you had a net increase in your net position of $3,219,000. There was a slight reduction in the Bastrop Power and Light Fund of $24,000. However, I will also remind that there was $865,000 transfer out of that fund, as well as there was depreciation, which is a noncash item of $198,000. So you have to kind of take all those items into effect, but other than that, it looked like it was a strong results for your enterprise operations for the year. Also point out to you that whenever a city receives, a governmental entity receives over $750,000 in federal grants in any specific year, your outside auditor has to do what they call a single audit. That's where we come in. We do a single audit of all your federal grant programs, picking out a couple of major ones. So that is why you have a separately bound report this year. So we're looking at two different things there, or actually, three different things. We're looking at your general compliance with laws and regulations. We're looking at your internal controls, and we're also looking specifically at the compliance requirements for your major programs. And in doing that work, we also issued unmodified opinions, and we also had no management letter findings or no reportable conditions as a result of that audit. So all in all, clean audit report this year, and the city is in great financial condition. More than happy to entertain any questions the city may have.
Great job, Mr. Belt. Really appreciate that. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Belt? Fantastic presentation. Thank you for the clean bill of health, and special thanks to our CFO Waldron and her entire department. It doesn't just accidentally happen. Thank you. Good job. One of the things that we always want to do as council members is make sure that each and every tax dollar that we collect is spent appropriately, accounted for appropriately, and that we're accountable to how that's done. So really appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mr. Belt, and have a safe journey home. You're welcome to stay or have a safe journey home. It's totally up to you. All right, council, I'm moving on to the bottom of Page Two, which is citizen comments. Madam Secretary, I believe I only have one citizen comment tonight. Is that correct? All right. Council, this citizen comment, I think you also have a copy at the dais. It is from Tanya, and I believe it's Tanya Dahl, I think is the correct way to say that. And Tanya lives at 373 FM 2571 in Smithville, Texas, and she has the following comments. "Is there a reason why Bastrop doesn't have a new grocery store in the works? With the pandemic of 2020 and future ones, plus the winter freeze performed by H A A R P, shouldn't Bastrop be a little more prepared? HEB is at its capacity and can barely keep up with the demand. Either another HEB, Brookshures, or Randalls is needed here. What can we do to petition this to the city?" That is our citizen comment for this evening, and we are moving on to Page Three. We have the consent agenda, and Councilmember Rogers, I believe you wanted to pull 11B?
Yes, ma'am, 11B.
Okay, so 11B is pulled, and we will take that immediately after the rest of the consent agenda. Council, is there anyone else who would like to pull a consent item? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wants a consent item pulled? Madam Secretary, if you will please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 23rd, 2021 regular meeting. Item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-24 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Hunt Communities Bastrop LLC for the Colony Mud 1C, Section 1, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establish an effective date. Item 11D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-25 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, reappointment of Blazkoy Jr. as presiding municipal judge, and approving a contract to provide services attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, repealing conflicting provisions and establishing for an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Move to approve for 11A.
Okay. I had three of you talking all at the same time. I'm going to give that motion to Councilmember Ennis and the second to Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. And Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. The consent agenda is approved as read, and we will now take up Item 11B. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-22 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a joint agreement between the city of Bastrop, Bastrop Independent School District, Elgin Municipal Utility District Number 1, and Elgin Municipal Utility District Number 2, for the May 1st, 2021, general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Good evening, mayor and council. You have before you tonight a joint election agreement from the county of Bastrop. On January 12th, we brought before you a joint agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop Independent School District. Since that time, we were informed by Bastrop County election administrator that the Elgin Mud Number 1 and Number 2 would like to join in the joint election. In doing so, that will cause our costs to go down. We will now pay $15,308.62 with those two entities being part of the election, rather than the cost of $16,566.1, which was the original cost without the two being included. This will be a savings for the city of Bastrop of $1,257.39.
Excellent job, Madam Secretary. Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to pull that from the consent agenda. I just thought it was important that anytime we talk about the elections, that it's brought up, and I wanted to make sure that the citizens knew about the big savings that we're doing by doing it jointly, so I moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any other comments? Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to the items for individual consideration, of which we have four this evening. The first one is Item 12A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance number 2021-02 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as emergency management director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. Council, this is when I usually give you my update, and sometimes we ask for items for you guys to approve. I am going to be asking you to approve something tonight. I have not signed an order, but I do have a phase-out plan. You have a copy of it on your dais, and Councilmember Jackson, you were emailed a copy of that. With your permission, I'd like to have that conversation last, and let me tell you a couple of other things before we start this conversation. One of the things that I always tell you guys is, in our trauma service area, how we're doing on hospitalizations. You'll recall that there are additional restrictions when you are over 15%. We are currently at 5.79%. The vaccines allocated in the state of Texas are $10.9 million as of 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon. In Bastrop County, there are 8,258 people who have received one dose and 3,557 people who are fully vaccinated. That is a total of 11,815 people, which is 17% of the population over the age of 16. The last time we met, two weeks ago, it was 10%. Of the clinics that have been held to date, they have given, because if you count the first dose, the second dose, and then other people getting the first dose, they've given a total of 17,767 doses have been done through the hubs, and the Bastrop County allocation, since the beginning of allocations, is now at 21,400. Because things can never be completely straightforward, many of you are familiar with the fact that the Jensen Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has been approved. It was received in Bastrop County by some of the providers. I know of one provider that got 200. So we had always been counting first dose, second dose, so now if you get that one, you only need one dose, so it's another set of numbers to keep up with. I would I would continue to encourage folks to use covac.info. They're the best source for getting an appointment. You can go to DSHS, and they update on a regular basis. I know several folks that were told at Walmart a certain day in time to call, and they got their appointments right away. So we have several distributors. It's your private doctor, it's the Walgreens, it's, there's lots of ways to get it, and they are going fast. But we can get, now that they are running four hub clinics a week, last week, last Thursday, they did their first clinic that they did more than 2,000 doses in one day, and they did 1,500 doses the next day. So that's how we're going to start working on that waiting list, is when we get more allocated and trying to get those into arms as fast as we can. So, some of you may be aware that the governor issued Executive Order 34 on March 2. Because we are in a county that does not have high hospitalizations, and because of the essence of his order, that's what brings us to the phase-out. We need to be in compliance, because we don't have the high hospitalizations. The governor is, and I'm reading exactly from here, that there be no operating limits for any business or other establishment, but he also says that individuals are strongly encouraged to wear face coverings over the nose and mouth wherever it is not feasible to maintain a six-foot social distancing. So you, we have, we have this document, this phase-out document, that we implemented when we very first started the emergency, and you know that we started with phase one and we've moved through it. I am tonight recommending that we go to phase-out so that we are in compliance with the governor's orders. We serve two roles. We have jurisdiction within the city limits, and the governor's been real strong about what we, as a governing entity, can put as restrictions and not put as restrictions, with the emphasis being on not put as restrictions. We are also an employer, and as an employer, like any other employer, we can take steps, and in my opinion, should take steps, to make sure that we keep our employees safe. That being said, things that I am proposing, and what I will be looking for, is a motion to approve the ordinance 2021-02 with this phase-out document as Exhibit A, that you see is Amendment Number 4 and dated March 9, 2021. We will no longer be doing temperature checks at the front desk. I don't know if we've ever caught anyone over temperature anyway, and it's extra things to handle. We will continue to tell our folks, if you are feeling bad, do not come to work. That is always our policy. We will keep having the Plexiglas here in council chambers, and there is, there are a few strategic places across our facilities where we have some Plexiglas, and we plan to have those in place for now, not forever, but for now. And we will also no longer have the curbside parking places reserved for the restaurants, because the restaurants are now able to work as a business, and you can still park on the street and pick up a to-go order. There's no, nothing keeping you from doing that. I had a call from a restaurant owner that wanted to make sure they knew what the rules were, and so I want to make sure that I convey both to council and to the general public, as an individual restaurant or store owner, you still have the same rights that you had before. You can go to 100% capacity if you're a restaurant. You can choose yourself to not go to 100% capacity. You can say that it's mandatory for someone to have a mask to be in your establishment. If they don't want to do that, and you have asked them politely to leave, you still have the right to call the police and have them escorted from your premises as trespassing, because it is your place of business, and you get to make the rules at your house. We will be recommending that folks that are, you may find some of our employees are sitting at their desk with their mask on. That is completely their choice. We're going to still encourage that if folks are moving around and not able to keep the six-foot distance, that if you see us walking up and down the hall, we're going to encourage folks to wear their mask. Curbside policy. The other thing I have to make you aware of, and counsel, our city attorney referenced this earlier, another group that has their own jurisdiction and rules are, of course, the attorneys. And so Judge Coy, who you guys have agreed to reappoint, the, what is being allowed by the Texas Supreme Court is that courts may conduct in-person proceedings. They are choosing to not do that, but keep going with the plan that they have, and they are talking about looking at June as when they would start having bench trials, because there's fewer people in the courtroom, and that they would go to jury trials perhaps later in the year. But they, the municipal court is trying to stay in compliance with the rules that they're getting from how they can handle court. So we're trying to be compliant, say grace over everything, and be a good employer, but not contradict the governor's orders that really and truly, however, whether you like him or not, whether you like the orders or not, they're based in the essence of folks that if you walk into a situation that you think is unsafe, you leave. If you feel safe in that situation, then you're able to do what you wish. One big thing that I want to make sure that we're aware of, and let's talk about the convention center. If a family wants to rent the convention center to have a family reunion, and they have folks that, we will clean the convention center, the family reunion will come in. They are paying for the ability to use that convention center. They can have alcohol if they want, if they follow the TABC rules. They have to follow the security rules. And when they are done, whether they've worn masks or not worn masks, when they are done and they vacate the premises, we, as the landlord, will clean the entire convention center before the next person is in there. That's what's included in the phase-out. We will have the guidelines there, and we can recommend the guidelines, but we are not going to police the events for folks that are paying to have utilization of the convention center. So an example of that is if the chamber decides they want to have their luncheon in April in person, they can decide if they want to do that. They would then be responsible for the rules on whether they're going to have a buffet, how they're going to serve food, whether they're going to mandate masks. It's their function, and they are responsible for that. With that, I've done lots of talking, so I'll be quiet and let you guys ask me some questions. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am, I have just one question. On the public meetings, right now, we're allowing people for citizen comments to email them in, but it doesn't state that we're going to still allow that? So how are we going to handle, just so the public knows during our council meetings, if they have a citizen comment, are they still allowed to email them in? Do they need to, are we going back to the rules of procedure?
Excellent question. I'm fine with people still emailing in their citizen comments. That's a policy thing that we can...
As I said, if we're going back, then, you know, are we going back to the original procedures where they have to, you know, be here and submit them in?
And that may be something that we want to look at, just changing our procedures in general to allow online citizen comments. Is there, counsel, how do you feel about Councilmember Rogers' suggestion? Councilmember Ennis?
I wasn't suggesting anything. I was just bringing it, just, I had a question.
If I can chime in, at this point, we're operating under emergency orders that the governor adopted almost a year ago, wherein he suspended certain aspects of the Texas Open Meetings Act. He has not announced, that I've seen, if he's going to let them expire, which is anticipated, or is he going to renew them? So we don't know right now, and I don't have any guidance to offer you. If his emergency order expires, that means we go back to the old way, and one reason cities did not have these kind of virtual meetings very often is because it's difficult to have the live two-way audio/video by everyone that's speaking. If we can pull that off, then we can do that, but it may be premature to have this part of the discussion. We should wait and see what Governor Abbott does.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I meant to, I felt really bad. That was my item number two. I promise, it's even highlighted. My item number two was that for council meetings, that the virtual was still allowed, because the exceptions to the Texas Open Meetings Act is separate from the governor's orders, and so we're still following those, we have to be compliant with those rules.
Alan, did they have an expiration date? You said when they expired? Does it?
Yeah, it's like the 20s.
Was it just whenever he says it?
It's in March. I forget the date.
I just didn't know if it had a date or just whenever he says. I just was curious.
Go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
There was an update from TML today. I just saw the email. He did renew them another month.
Okay, so it sounds like they'll be the end of April. Thank you so much. That was a great question, and I meant to cover the Texas Open Meetings Act. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I do, I have a concern and a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know that the governor's order supersedes most, but there are several cities and other businesses, of course, that are going to still require the masking in spite of the governor's order and everything. I know HEB has changed its mind. At first, it was just going to have their employees, and now they're having even their customers and everyone, and they're going to require masks, and several other businesses across the state are doing that. So I know we don't really have that many, or if we have any federal buildings, but basically those will be in effect also with masking, and they'll follow those guidelines. I'm just wondering if that's something that we should consider, or are we just going to go along with what the governor stated and stay in that sense?
Well, right now, what I'm recommending to counsel is that businesses make their own decision, just like HEB and any other business, and I'd like to stay compliant where folks are encouraged, but not mandating masks in the city buildings.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
And just a couple of points on that. We actually will be requiring city employees to wear masks when they're in contact with the public, just to make sure that's clear. And so that, in that regard, our practice for city employees really won't change that much. And while the recommendations that's being made now is that we don't require visitors to our city facilities to wear masks, subject to what council does tonight, we will immediately put up signs at all of our entrances that will say that masks are recommended or encouraged or words to that effect. And as the mayor said, and I think it bears repeating too, in light of your questions, Mr. Jackson, those city employees who deal with the public most often will still be sitting behind the Plexiglas shields that we've put up. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes. Councilmember Rogers?
I was wondering if, by chance, the signs that you make that say it's recommended? Because I know a lot of businesses have used the sign that the city made with the mayor's. I don't know if that image could be shared with some businesses. So all the businesses, if possible, they could all have the same image, so the citizens would see that.
Sure, we can share that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2021-02.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes four to one. We are moving on to item 12B, consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-29 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions regarding fitness and recreational facilities and programs as related to a city pilot recreation membership program and providing an effective date. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, counsel. We talked about this subject in, no, in December, and I'm going to give you a recap on our activities with regard to recreation planning and describe what we're currently thinking to do, starting in April, which is when Phase 2 starts. And at the end of this, I will ask counsel to take action and approve one particular element of what I'm suggesting to you this evening. So the slide on the screen is a recap of what the three phases we talked about in December are, and again, we're about to enter into Phase 2 in just a few weeks. Thank you, Colin. And again, just to quickly recap things you already know, what distinguishes Phase 1, as we took over the recreation programming activity from the YMCA, we decided it would be a good idea to not charge the participants for those three months in order to ease the transition from the YMCA-provided programming. We are leasing two properties downtown to house those operations. It is going well. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for working so hard, and a lot of city employees for getting the word out, and in fact, our participation is doubling what was happening with registration programs last fall. And those instructors that we're working with now have generally agreed to keep doing this work on into Phase 2. So what will distinguish Phase 2, again, as I said, is it won't be a free program anymore. So, subject to council's approval of this tonight, the idea here is that, starting in April, in order for someone to participate in our fitness programs or open gym programs and other ideas we are implementing for Phase 2, we will ask people to not only become registered members, but also pay a fee. And here, just a few words about how we propose to have that structured. There will be an individual rate, a family rate. We are proposing discounts for seniors and city employees. I think it's a good idea, as we think about city employee wellness initiatives, to incent city employee involvement in the program. We'll also propose a different fee structure for residents and a slightly increased fee for non-residents. So Ms. Moore and I and others have been thinking through, and Terry's been more than thinking, she's actually trying to make this happen, where we're adding value to the list of services that someone gets from being a member. Of course, we would continue with the basic fitness classes that we're offering now and the wellness center or open gym. There's quite a lot going on with the pool. Counsel, you know that the YMCA has more recently indicated that they won't be operating the pool this summer. We are in discussions with the officials at Bastrop State Park, and we are hopeful that those discussions will culminate in the park's decision to operate the pool this summer. I believe that they are close to a decision, and I'm optimistic about all of that. And so what I'm about to say is, based on the assumption that the state park does operate the pool, starting just after Memorial Day this year. And so with that assumption, with that understanding, the idea is that membership in the City of Bastrop's recreation program would provide entrance into the pool for fitness classes offered there and discounts on the daily swim. And suggesting a discount here, because we, along with the state park, are concerned about making sure there are revenues here to support the pool. And what that looks like in the future, we can certainly talk about that as we go. We did listen to counsel when we met in December and your interest in emphasizing youth-oriented programs. Terry's been working really hard on that, and there are some real opportunities there. There are groups out there that provide youth-oriented programs for the homeschool community. There are other groups like that that might offer programs such as clinics for certain sports. And the idea here is that we allow those... And the idea here is that we allow those service providers to use city facilities, city parks, at a discounted or perhaps no-fee basis. And in exchange, they'll offer discounts to their participants who have membership in the City of Bastrop program. That's the idea we're thinking through and having really good discussions with Bastrop Opera House, who is interested in using city facility and for some of their offerings, particularly their academy that they offer in the summer. And the idea there, too, is if a person is a member of the City of Bastrop program, they would get discounted entry into that academy. This is a way we're trying to build interest and value in the City of Bastrop recreation membership. So another idea here is that, once we see the expiration of our rental agreements at those two downtown properties where we're offering fitness classes and the wellness center now, and those leases expire at the end of June, that, starting in July, we would not renew those leases. We would move the bulk of the fitness programming and the open gym service into the old senior center, also former library at 1,008 Water Street. That's just beyond the Opera House back door. That building needs a new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. It hasn't been functioning for quite a while, as I understand it. We have an eight or $9,000 estimate to replace that HVAC system, which seems pretty reasonable. We also need to install a security system and make sure the doors are functioning and have that system accommodate controlled access into the building for people who are members. The details of all that, we are still working through, but we think we have a good plan. So if we follow this plan, the first three months of Phase Two, people would still be working out at the lumberyard. But, starting in July, we would move that to the old senior center. And that payback on that $12,000, and I think that's a very conservative estimate, based what I'm hearing from Mr. Hancock, that the payback on that, considering an almost $2,000 monthly rent, is actually pretty short. The other thing Terry's been working on is thinking through, because we do anticipate that this will be a fairly popular program. And to make the scheduling easier, we are looking at other facilities that might be used for some of these offerings, including fitness programs. And so there are discussions going on with the users of the current senior center, discussions that would not disrupt what they're using that building for now, but potentially add to it where we're offering City of Bastrop Fitness Centers very conveniently located for the folks that are using the senior center now and other people as well. And again, we would offer a discount for memberships to seniors. I've had a couple of conversations with Councilmember Jackson about using the Kerr Center just behind us here. And he has been very open, and we'll be talking to his board about that, too. It's just another offering that we can use to make the scheduling easier. There are prime times for both fitness and, for example, the Opera House Dance Academy. And having more than one space allows for more than one group to use the space at the most optimal times. Thank you, Colin. So here's some detail on the membership fees that we have in mind. A part of what was driving this recommended fee structure was paying attention to what private sector providers are providing and the rates that they are charging for monthly memberships. And we want to be not so undercutting what they are doing. Another thing we have done is have a meeting with three of those private sector representatives. Terry facilitated that meeting to let him know what we were doing and to offer them some opportunities to use city facilities and city equipment as well, including the outdoor fitness equipment that's located at Bob Bryant Park, which is just wonderful facility and equipment, perhaps pretty underutilized. I'm not sure how well-publicized it is. But that meeting went really very well, and they offered no concerns at all about what the city was doing here and, in fact, wished us luck. So again, thank you, Terry, for setting that meeting up. So, like I said, we're recommending, and this is the particular thing, council, I think I need your approval on this evening, to set this fee structure. We're calling it a pilot. This would only be in effect for six months, until we have the opportunity to develop a more specific program for fiscal '22. So the idea is that we charge residents $30, individual residents $30, individual non-residents $35, families $50 for residents, $55 for non-residents, seniors $20 and $25. And the recommended city employee discount would be $20 for an individual, $40 for family. And I'll talk more about the numbers as we go. Colin, thank you. So if we assume, and I think this is a conservative estimate, based on what we've seen for the first three months, understanding the first three months have been free, but just from anecdotal responses we're hearing from people and when they hear what we're proposing charging them for the registration fees, I think most of our current users are going to be okay with that. So, and this will, you need to think about these numbers as averages over the six months, not necessarily hitting the first of April with these numbers. But if we average this, that's where that revenue estimate of $14,100 comes from. Twenty individuals in-city, twenty individuals, non-city residents, ten family residents, ten family non-residents. So when I say full there, full individual, full family, I'm not assuming anything about discounted participation. The assumption here is that many full memberships over the average of the six-month period. That would generate a little over $14,000 in revenues this six months, this fiscal year. Colin, thank you. So the next few slides are called Challenges and Next Steps. We do have some challenges here. We've got a lot of work to do over the next few weeks to hit the ground running, the first of April. And I should clarify, when I say Phase Two starts in April, it's April 5th is a Monday, right? And so the actual start would be April 5th. Colin, that gives you a few more days to set up these memberships and get the word out. And again, Colin and Rick have done a really good job setting up the registration fees. It's another trick to set it up where we're allowing people to pay online. And that's what we're hoping to do. And council, if we're in this business on into next fiscal year and into the future, it does make sense for us to invest in some registration programming software. I'm not suggesting we do that while we're still piloting. But again, if we're in this longer term, we need something then other than a big cheap tablet and a big fat pencil, which is pretty much how we're doing it now. So on the pool operations, council, you know all this already. $30,000 comes out of the BPNL fund, actually, to pay for the city's contribution to the pool. We have already spent $7,500 of that, one quarter of that. I have asked the YMCA to reimburse us that. I meant to call them today, and I didn't get to it, to see where they are on that. I know they're thinking about it because, well, I just know they're thinking about it. My argument to them is this isn't, we're not reimbursing them for their expenses here. The way I read the agreement, what we paid for is a pool. And if we're not getting that from them, I think they owe us that $7,500 back. Whether we get that back or not, whatever the balance is, if Bastrop State Park runs the pool, it would be my strong recommendation that, whatever that balance is, we contribute to their operation of the pool. In fact, I've let them know that I was pretty confident that that could happen. Again, hopefully, hoping that they take that baton and run with it. Colin, next slide. Still, challenges and next steps. I mentioned this already. We're just a few weeks away from April 5th. We do, subject to what council says tonight, we'll start immediately to push out information. We'll need to describe what this membership buys them, and so we'll continue to get the details on that. And we need to tell them when these classes will happen. We're a few days away from nailing all that down. But the next big step is, council, you letting me know that you think this is a good plan or should be modified somehow. Again, kind of a repeat, we've got some work to do at the old senior center, and it's not just replacing the HVAC and making it secure. We still have some amount of stuff in that building that needs to be relocated. City Secretary Anne Franklin is, as it regards the extent to which that's documents that need to be filed somewhere else or laser-fished or destroyed, working with the departments who own that stuff, we need to get that taken care of so we're not just pushing this stuff around from building to building. And I mentioned earlier, a key element of what we need to be doing here is trying to find space for, other space for, housing our fitness activities. And thank you again, Terry, for doing that. Funding, I think, for Phase Two, council, we're in good shape. We're working with a $37,000 budget. If we continue on the path we're on, we will spend about $44,000 between Phase One and Phase Two. In order to net down to that $37,000, all we need is $7,000 in registration fee revenues to get us back to that. I think that's pretty conservative. And frankly, if we can't make $7,000 in revenue, then perhaps we rethink the whole thing. And that would be a good indicator moving forward. In that $44,000 of expenses that we're anticipating for Phases One and Two, that includes the contracts with instructors. That includes the rent for those two downtown spaces that goes away in July. That is some staffing to oversee the wellness center. That includes some janitorial contracts and supplies to keep those buildings clean. It does not include the, what we're paying Ms. Moore under her contract. That is being covered by vacancy savings, and we are tracking that. And it does not include the $12,000 to renovate the old senior center. And so we will talk, as we go through the budget, about Phase Three and what our funding needs are. Council, I think I can tell you on March 9th with some certainty, if we are thinking seriously about being in the recreation business, heading into fiscal '22, we do need a dedicated staff person to administer that and run that. And that's not a position that's in the budget today. So looking for feedback as appropriate. Council, there is a resolution in your packet, which asks you to approve several elements of what we're doing here. I think most of those were covered in the resolution you passed in December. Frankly, what's not in there and what I do need your approval on is creating that pilot fee structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I just have a question. I know that you, on one of your slides, it said that if we have 10 full-time, you had a couple of slides back, you generated in the six months the $14,000, right?
Thank you, Colin. There you go.
So in that same timeframe that you're thinking about, you'd generate the $14,000, not counting the renovation and other things, what do you think that timeframe would cost us budget-wise going forward? You know what I'm saying? If we're going to make $14,000 in this six months, how much? I know it is a pilot program, and I know there's a lot of working parts, and you can't just figure that out. But what is it costing us to make $14,000? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's costing, for Phases One and Two, it's costing us $44,000.
Well, yeah, but not Phase One and Two is happening in that six months. But I was just saying, if you're using those fees going forward, besides a pilot, or I guess going forward, if we, when we talk about this again, I'd like to know how much it's going to cost me. I'm making this much money. I want to know how much this much money is costing me to make that.
And we will put a recommended budget together and bring that back to council. And you're right, that $44,000 is for nine months. And I suppose you could extrapolate that into 12 months and come up with an expense budget. But again, that did not include the oversight of the program. And...
I'm sorry. I just meant going forward.
Yeah, sure.
When we talk again, when you bring us this $14,000, you'll make this much money in six months?
And we'll have a revenue, we'll have a revenue projection to go along with that.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Comment and ask. First, my comment, appreciation for you addressing this unanticipated problem in such a responsive way. I really do appreciate it. Congratulations on coming up with a really good plan. Please convey that to staff. My ask is of, council, I would like to consider a reduced fee for both veterans and the disabled population, if we could.
We can certainly do that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson, would the suggestion be where, Colin, I think if you go back a slide, there's a discount for seniors, would you like that to say seniors, disabled, and veterans?
That would be the ideal place for it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned marketing. I take that will be done by our communications team.
Yes, sir.
Here at the city. Who is currently keeping the registration records? I mean, is that Colin and Rick, et cetera?
Yes, and that is overseen by Ms. Moore, but yes, that is all captured.
Okay.
We have all that information. Yes, sir.
Have, and I'm sure knowing Ms. Moore, she has thought about this, but have you all contemplated sponsorships?
Yes, we have, actually.
Is that something the city can undertake from our, I mean, usually it's private entities that go after sponsorships. That's okay. We don't run any legal...
I think if we're going to do that full-time, I think that warrants council discussion.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And last...
And we've contemplated meeting with other entities that might help us out from a granting perspective. That's more of a long-term thing as well. And we've got meetings set up with some of those entities. I think it'll be helpful to let them know we're in Phase Two and we're seriously thinking about it for the long term. I think if we're going to go and seek granting assistance, we need to come with a pretty solid message that we're in this for the long term.
Got you. I know that this is an accident-prone type of endeavor. Does our city insurance cover that?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say that I am just so glad that the city manager and staff have been working on this. It's really quite impressive, I think, because we've gone from losing the Y and the transitional period and now trying to get into the recouping some fees and things and keeping the interest going. And I just applaud the work and the insights they put into this. I hope that this is something that we can continue because I think the citizens really will appreciate this program. I mean, they really were appreciating what the Y was doing. But since they have left us, I think it's good for us to continue this. And I just wanted to let them know that I appreciate the work they put into it. But of course, I'm a little biased since I'm a recreation person. But of course, I'm a little biased, since I'm a recreation person, but it is something that's been needed, and I just applaud them for the hard work and insight.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jackson. My question is, how old is a senior?
You took my question.
We do, Terry, help me out.
We were suggesting 55.
Thank you.
55, okay. I just, I didn't know, and I...
I didn't want to stay late, because it could be in that...
Okay, all right.
Although AARP says 50, but 55 is good.
All right, council, any other questions? Happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
A motion from Councilmember Ennis?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson, that is for Resolution 2021-29. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council, and thank you, city manager and staff, and Ms. Moore for getting all the tons of hard work, as Mayor Pro Tim Nelson pointed out, certainly was not on the, was not on the agenda when we started our fiscal year. We're moving on to Item 12C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2021-26 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving a Master Service Agreement with AquaMetrix, Attached as Exhibit A to Upgrade the Current Regional Network Interface Related to Advanced Metering Infrastructure, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Proving Reappealing Clause and Establishing for an Effective Date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, good evening. So, just want to cover, AquaMetrix is our current provider, and what this master service agreement does is basically changes sort of the methodology of what they're doing. Right now, we have hardware and software here, and that they're not gonna support anymore. So basically, this upgrade is required in order to continue our AMI, to continue, so it's really changes that they're making. We do see it as a positive, that what they call software as a service is basically everything will be cloud-based, everything, there will be more responsibility on them to upgrade the software, provide better technology as we go along, and all of that will be things that they will be doing on their end. So it will be, they're kind of selling it as less IT on our seat, on our side, and more responsibility on their side. There is a one-time fee with this service agreement that basically gets everything set up, and then there, the annual fee that we're paying now is about double going forward for this, this new upgrade. We knew about all this going into the budget, we had been given a quote, it's all included in the budget that you approved in September. Some of the, the added benefits are things that the technicians are gonna get in the field, so because it's a cloud-based, it's gonna be a lot more flexible for them out in the field, they can get on their iPads when they're troubleshooting the meters, they can run reports out in the field, so there's a lot of benefits. We've seen the presentation of, I think the leak reports that the utility office will be able to access is also gonna be enhanced in a lot of ways, so there's a lot of benefits. But of course, benefits do come with a cost, so I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. This reminds me of, there's a point that your phone no longer supports the iOS system, and you have to decide whether you want your phone to function or not. Council, it's important for folks to realize that this automated metering is one of the ways we were able to, we, Public Works was able to work through the ice storm because they could track where the leaks were, where they were losing water, and try to help isolate a leak. What I'm hearing her say with clouds means that they won't have to come back to a single panel, but they could, with their iPads in the field, have access to information that they don't have. I would assume that Mr. Hancock is supportive of this?
He sat through the training, and yes, yes.
Excellent. Councilmember Ennis?
While reading through this agenda, I had a minute, something came to mind. Do you have any concept of how much personnel savings this is, we've gained through the use of this kind of system?
Well, we did have three full-time meter readers, so those were worked into other areas once we went on to the AMI system.
So when we talk about a cost like this, we're actually, in a lot of ways, maybe saving ourselves some money?
Okay.
Not quite, but it looks better by...
Not to the bean counter, Councilmember Ennis, the bean counter says it's more beans.
Unfortunately, the technology, it costs money to have the technology, but the technology is, is what, you know, we thrive for as far as being able to provide that detail out on our customer portal when people can go out there and see their, every hour, what their consumption is. We're providing them a lot of good information, good data, good technologies.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If Ms. Waldron said we have the money, I'll move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, my question, I think, Ms. Waldron said we do have the budget to take care of it. I think according to what Councilmember Peterson just said, that was my question as far as with the upgrade, how we were gonna pay for it, but if it's in the budget and we found money for it, I will definitely be in agreement.
Yes, it was put in the budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, yes, it is in the budget that you approved last October, September, for the October start. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. I'm moving on to Item 12B.
Mayor, I did want to tell Tracy, thank you again for putting the pages of where it was in the budget for us, that made it easy for me to find, so thank you again for...
Thank you, Ms. Waldron, from all of council, for pointing out, it makes a big difference when we can put our hand on it right away. Really, thank you, Councilmember Rogers, for pointing that out. All right, council, we're on Item 12D at 7:44. Are we okay, or do we need a quick bio break?
I can turn the air conditioner a little bit higher, it's freezing.
Oh, okay, we're freezing, Mr. Jobe, we're freezing. Don't let your council freeze. All right, we're moving on to Item 12D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2021-28 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Regarding a Proposed Mixed-Use Development Project Authorizing, Creating the Veridian, did I say that correctly? Veridian Public Improvement District, Formerly Known as the New Community Bastrop, Establishing the PID Boundaries for a 410-acre Track Adjacent to the City Limits to the West of FM 969 and Southwest of the Colorado River. Original Owner, David K. Grassel. Review of Draft Conceptual Plans and Consideration and Approval of the Related Land-Use Development Contractual Documents Involving D.R. Horton and Continental Homes of Texas. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I know that was a mouthful, but we wanted to make sure we covered everybody in this, in the staff report and the heading. So, that being said, if you'll recall, we had a discussion on December 8th with the same piece of property, let me pull up to the boundaries, with the same, exact same piece of property, that was noticed, and at that time, we had a request to establish the PID boundaries, approve a development agreement, and a few other items, professional service agreement, and all those were set for action. There were, there were elements in the concept plan that staff hadn't fully reviewed, weren't comfortable with, ultimately leading in a recommendation for denial, and what took place that night was we took no action on the PID boundaries, and we took no action on the actual development agreement itself. We did take action approving the form of the professional service agreement, and if you'll notice in your packet, we actually have a signed and executed professional service agreement with the new developer. Again, same property, some of the same team, but their approach is a little bit different, and we've asked for a few things, the planning staff has, our city attorney, and our FA. Our FA has reviewed the numbers, our financial advisor, and they're comfortable with the product, they're comfortable this is something they can underwrite. City staff has reviewed the concept plan, which you see on the, on the screen here now. The connectivity and the intent of the B3 code, we believe is being met. There are some geographically sensitive reasons that a road can't be put in, but you can see there's connectivity to the north and south, east and west, which really is what we were looking for, and these are gonna be public roads, so we're happy about that. And then we have a dissolution agreement, so ultimately, if we can't establish the improvements and implement an assessment plan, this PID request dissolves by September of 2023. So we feel like the risk is limited, this is worth doing, and I make a recommendation for approval of boundaries, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, Councilmember Ennis?
Why was this, that graphic not put in the packet?
So I noticed when reading the packet, it was supposed to be attached, and I'm assuming I forgot to put it in the right folder, that's why I put it in the slideshow. So this is the, the, what is in there is the dissolution agreement and the professional service agreement. What is not in there, your effect was this concept plan, so I have it here tonight for you to review. But it does meet the intent of what we think, the connectivity.
The document that you're asking us to approve tonight is not tied to this concept plan.
That's correct.
We're setting the boundaries, so this is, this is an example, but it doesn't mean that that's the final layout. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. But what you are approving tonight is the boundaries that you see on the, on the screen now.
How does it, okay, well, what is meeting the B3 code, then?
What we have in here, and these are pretty close, but it's the connectivity intent. If you'll remember originally, the first presentation that we saw was completely disconnected, none of the roads were gonna be public, there was some connectivity through there, but it was all private, and the, and the backbone of what we've kind of adopted in the B3 codes and our master transportation plan is that 720 grid. Some of these are a little larger than that, but there'll be some internal street networks as we go forward to make sure that we have a good connectivity. And we'll bring back more information, honestly, on, excuse me again, on what that looks like in the future, the final draft, yes.
So, when you say, I'm gonna repeat this until I get it up here, so what you're giving us with that particular graph, graphic was that the reason it met the B3 codes was the access, egress and access into the PID boundary?
That's correct, there were, there were...
Nothing inside is, is the way it would be?
Correct, it's, there were no, in the original layout that we saw on December 8th, there was no connectivity across the entire PID boundaries, it was, it was all gonna be private roads. What you see now is a, is a curvilinear grid that has the connections that we, that the intent of the code meets.
So, just for clarity, because I feel like we may be talking past each other a tiny bit, what you are asking, what the applicant is asking for approval tonight is the PID boundary?
PID boundary only.
And the PID boundary is not B3 compliant, it's a PID boundary.
Right.
So, the, and one of the reasons that you're recommending moving forward is because you've seen a preliminary concept plan that does meet the B3 code.
That's correct.
But action tonight does not finalize that plan, and the expectation is whatever preliminary concept, as that gets finalized, they are willing to comply with the B3 code, but it's weird, the boundary itself is not compliant with the B3 code, because there's nothing in there that's compliant. So that's kind of a weird...
I understand, I understand that. I, it was the fact that we were, this, he said it was compliant with the B3 code that was throwing me off, because I thought, that didn't look compliant to the B3 code to me.
So what it means is the intent of that 720 grid, right? And, and again, there'll be some internal streets that will provide the, I know you're thinking the 330 blocks and the smaller grid, but what we do currently on the ETJ is lay out a 720. This is, meets that intent. There are some that are long, but they have either a geographically sensitive reason or something of that nature.
Hmm.
So I will compare all that as we come through with the service assessment plan and the final concept plan, and make sure that everyone understands that, and it's very clear.
So clear something else up for me. If you have, if we approve this tonight, how many other stages do we go through where we have approval either to move forward with this or not?
So anytime a special assessment or debt is issued, you will have the approval authority on that, and we'll make sure it relates back to whatever public improvements are being installed. So you will see what the public improvements are, what the cost of that is, you get to vote on the issuance of the bonds, and then you will ultimately approve the overall service and assessment plan, and you'll get to see it annually after that.
My concern is, is not daily in bad faith. If we're gonna approve this, I think we ought to be ready to prove all the way down the line, unless there's some circumstances that crop up that just go, whoop, can't do that.
Right.
And do you foresee anything like that happening? Of course, I know that's a difficult...
Well, I've seen that, we received a email with the draft development agreement today, I have not went through it because we received it today, but I am confident that they are moving in that direction. They, we have truly seen a, a stride to, to work with city staff and be as compliant as possible.
So if it doesn't go that direction, we always have the opportunity and the option to say, okay, we can't do this?
That's correct, and that dissolution agreement is your safety net, if you will. Right, so if we can't come to some type of agreement and issue debt or a special assessment, it expires in September of 2023. This boundary expires.
Okay, I guess I, I guess I'm fine.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just for clarity, I was under the assumption we were approving the PID boundaries this evening, but I noticed that it's creating and establishing the PID. Is that, is that correct, or is it just worded incorrectly?
It's the same, so the boundaries are the public improvement district area, the boundaries, so I think it's, it made the language maybe a little different, but, but it is, it is the boundaries which are the public improvement district area.
But if certain criteria are not met, then, then the, then we'll be able to, the dissolution agreement then comes into effect at, at the appropriate time.
That's correct.
But we're, I just want to make sure, and to follow up on Councilmember Ennis's question, that, that we want to make sure that we have lessons learned from previous iterations of PIDs for the city. We want to make sure that we don't fall into those kind of traps, which I don't think we are, because I, my preliminary review of this has been fairly favorable, but I just, I was unclear whether or not we were establishing and creating the PID, or we're just establishing the boundaries of the PID.
It is establishing the PID, but not the service and assessment plan, which...
There you go.
Which is the boundaries.
That was the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Yes, and, and I will say, we're with you, hate to copy off the farmers, but we've seen a thing or two, so we've learned a thing or two, and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we're vigilant.
So, so if you've got the boundaries?
Yes, sir.
And then you go to the service and assessment plan, and if we're not in, not comfortable with the services and assessment plan, which is what got us in trouble last time, then things come to a grinding halt.
Then we, yep, we keep working, or we, or it comes to a grinding halt.
Right, right, we either fix it to our satisfaction, or we, okay.
I always like analogies. I think the dissolution agreement's kind of like a prenuptial agreement. If it doesn't work out, we've agreed how we're all walking away from each other. So, you gotta have good intentions, and I, Councilmember Ennis, I so appreciate your point of, look, council, if you're not interested in a PID, do them a favor and say no now, right? But what I hear us saying is, we want to do a good PID. We want to make sure that we're upfront, that we're doing the reviews on a, on an annual basis. I know at one point, there was discussions about, and keep in mind, this is in the ETJ, it's not automatically annexed, there was a discussion of, if you buy a home out there, you may pay PID taxes for a period of time, and then you would become annexed and pay city taxes, but those are decisions that'll be made in the future, if I'm understanding this process correctly.
That's correct.
And I hope, I hope the Veridian folks, those of you here tonight, do not think that we're not trusting. We've had some serious issues, which I'm sure you're aware, with the three-letter word called PID, and so it goes blink, 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 and that's why all the questions.
And I, and I don't know if this helps, but I will say, Debeere was actually very vital in fixing the current PID that we have. He was part of that team, so he's very familiar with the problems, and probably does not want them to be repeated, so, I mean, I think that's a good asset to have on the team.
Council, it's worth noting that Tally Williams signed up as Citizens Comment, and mainly they filled it out for the purpose of, if we have any questions of the applicant's attorney, that they're available, so I will put that in the record as well. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, two, two things that I think are vitally important. First of all, the city's not incurring any financial obligation in the PID.
That's absolutely correct.
And the second is, is this PID will have a... And the second is, is this PID will have a termination date, which original, uh, earlier iterations of PIDs did not have a termination date for, or an end date for the, for the PID.
That's correct.
So, that's very much encouraging.
Yes.
Council, any other questions for Mr. Jobe?
I move to approve.
I have a motion...
I'll speak real quick. Trey, were, are we gonna cover the professional services agreement separately after this?
Um, if we need to vote on that, so what we have is a, um, a, a check in hand, an executed professional service agreement. It was not actually, um, expending any money. So, but if you think we need to vote on that, we can absolutely vote on it separately.
I always listen to the city attorney.
We, we have in your packet, Mayor and council, a, a professional services agreement, which is similar to the one that we had, uh, prepared prior to the holidays, but the project name has changed, the, uh, owner, developer's name has changed, the terms and conditions are the same. So to Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's point, um, there's actually developer funds coming to the city to offset the city's professional costs in going through this PID consideration and formation process.
So would you, um, offer a suggested motion for a council member that would like to cover all of that?
A motion to approve the resolution, it, it could be one vote to approve R 2021-28 and the accompanying professional services agreement. And one vote could take care of both matters, if you please.